Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Womet. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Womet. We'll call the matters in the order which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have one so you can follow along to see when your matter will be called. If you plan to address us tonight, we ask you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you please speak clearly into the microphone so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. And from those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and these minutes are available both at Village Hall and on our website at womet.com. Also, our Village Board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet. And if you look up in the corners of the room, you can actually see the cameras. The red light indicates the active camera. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the Village Board, see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask and policies we create. You can find archived videos of Village Board and other local government meetings at womet.com. And I'd like to personally thank all the residents of Womet who tune in regularly to Channel 6 and pay attention to the workings of their village government. Now, before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials, and the very same materials are also posted on womet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so residents and other interested parties can review those materials. This week's packet contained 482 pages, and we've had an opportunity to review this information. So if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, sort of the most important points you want us to focus on. Finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy to those around you, would you please take this time to turn off your cellphones and other devices? And while we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan. Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman. Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here.
President Blinsky.
Here. So we have a quorum. Five members does make up a quorum. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. During public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda. Members of the audience may address the Board on matters which are on the agenda when that particular matter is called. So I'll ask now, is there any member of the audience who would like to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda? May I see a show of hands? Yes. Mr. Pierce. You could not stay away. Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm George Pierce. Thank you for allowing me this time, three minutes. I'm here to make the public aware of this Sunday, an event at Vatman Park, which is, we're referring to it as a unity mass. And this is celebrating the combination of St. Joseph and St. Francis Church. And July 1st, there will be one parish. The two parishes will combine into one. And as part of that, we're having an outdoor mass. Right now, we have about almost 800 people signed up to attend. I think it'll be a very popular event. These two churches have really been part of the fabric of Womet, St. Joe's since 1845, St. Francis since 1904, so it affects a lot of our citizens. After the mass, which is at 10:00 a.m., there will be a picnic, and everyone is welcome. There'll be chairs, you can bring blankets, there'll be hot dogs and drinks, and also food trucks. There is parking at the metro lot, which is free. There will be buses coming from the churches. And I'm just here to promote it, to let everyone know about it, because it's really an exciting time for each of the churches, and it'll be a lot of fun. So...
Any questions for Mr. Pierce? Thank you very much.
Followed the three minutes. Okay. Thank you.
Well inside the three minutes. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board on a matter which is not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to Item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items that begin with the number 3 are on the Consent Agenda, so tonight that means starting on Page 1 with Item 3.1, all of the items on Page 2, and about half the items on Page 3, ending with Item 3.19. Items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight, and if an item's not removed by a member of the audience, it's not removed by one of the trustees, it will be approved and it will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking, is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? May I see a show of hands? Okay, moving on, are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Blinsky.
Aye. So the motion carries the Consent Agenda has been adopted. If you were here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it was just approved, and I'll clarify for people here tonight, again, all the items beginning with the number 3 have been approved, and that includes land use items 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5. So if that was one of your items, or if that was your item, there'll be no further discussion of that item or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda. You're free to leave, of course, more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Now, you're the only person leaving, so I'll direct this only to you. It is early, and there are restaurants downtown, plenty of time for you to stop by one before heading home. Yeah, the Cubs are on. Unless you're going to the Stones concert, then, you know, you gotta hurry, so. Busy night, so anybody who's watching out there in TV land, thank you very much for really paying attention to your local government. So move on to what most of the people in the room are here for. The Report of Officers, Item 4.1, is recognition of Deputy Fire Chief Rob Brill on completion of Executive Fire Officer Program. So I believe Chief Wasney will be coming up here for that presentation, for that discussion. Welcome, Chief.
Thanks for having us. I want to thank the Board for giving us this opportunity to come together and celebrate Deputy Chief Brill's major accomplishment. I also want to thank Rob's family for coming, and as well as our extended family of our on-duty and firefighters, and all the guys in t-shirts and shorts back there that look well tanned are all of our retired firefighters. So thanks for, thank you. Once again, I think the last time I was here, I forgot my glasses. I've done it again, so I'm going to squint a little bit while I'm reading.
Chief, you want to borrow mine? How are those?
Perfect. Thank you. It is my pleasure to inform you that Deputy Chief Rob Brill has successfully completed his Executive Fire Officer Program for the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. The EFO program is a four-year commitment that requires the student to attend one two-week course per year at the National Fire Academy. Each course is the equivalent of an upper-division bachelor or graduate program and requires the completion of an applied research project at the end of each one of these courses. Rob has spent hundreds of hours completing the program and the required coursework on top of his daily duties. His dedication and commitment to the program should be commended and celebrated. One of the things that everybody needs to understand is Rob started this four years ago, well before he was Deputy Chief. So going through all those processes, which takes a lot of time, being our go-to person for all of our computer issues, it has really been a momentous accomplishment to do this, studying on-duty, studying off-duty, studying at night, studying on the weekends. So this is much more than just your regular student going to class, so it's really something quite special. So at this time, I'm gonna have his two daughters, Anne and Olivia, present Rob. Rob, you want to come up with his certificate from the Executive Fire Officer Program at the National Fire Academy? but this could not have been done without the help of his wife Allison, who was at home raising their two daughters while he was away at two weeks at a time and doing all those hours of study. So I have something for you as well, Allison.
In case anybody missed that, she said she deserves this.
Also gonna recognize tonight firefighter Cody Wigan and firefighter Dan Walters.
Yes, you're moving. That's Item 4.2. So, recognition of firefighter paramedic Walters and firefighter paramedic Wigan, so...
Yeah, just over here for right now. We're not ready for pictures just yet.
He has to recognize you first, then you get pictures taken.
At approximately 3:30 p.m. on May 31st, 2019, the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, otherwise known as AIMA, requested assistance from New Berns Mavis Divisions throughout the state of Illinois. Assistance was needed for flooding in communities in southern and central Illinois along the Illinois and Mississippi Rivers. Mavis Division 3 was tasked to provide boat packages and initially eight swiftwater technicians and boat operators to deploy to Hardin, Illinois for a three-to-10-day operation period with only a four-hour notice. At the time, firefighter paramedic Walters volunteered and deployed with the group. They traveled 305 miles through the night, arriving in Hardin at 5:00 a.m. The group immediately began working on searching flooding homes. Firefighter paramedic Walters and members of his team spent the next nine days conducting searches, providing EMS logistical support to the community. The group worked with local first responders and the National Guard. Their combined efforts mitigated damage and assured the needed supplies and transportation of the sick and injured residents via boat were conducted around the clock. Firefighter Walters is to commend him for his efforts as well as his dedication during the flood relief efforts. Going on top of everything that I just said, during the initial deployment, several flood barriers began to fail or were considered vulnerable to failure. As conditions worsened along the rivers, AIMA requested that the Cook County Swiftwater Team deploy to the area. The CCSRT is a specialized group that has the equipment and training to deploy to flooded and water disasters nationwide. Firefighter paramedic Wigan is a member of this team and was chosen to deploy with the group. Firefighter paramedic Wigan conducted search and rescue operations during his nine-day deployment. He also assisted local residents with transportation and logistical support. Firefighter paramedic Wigan is to be commended for his actions during this difficult deployment as well as his commitment and his professionalism. So just as a side note, not really a side note, just to give you guys an idea of what exactly they were dealing with down there. The riverhead, the town of Hardin had actually, is located right between the Illinois and the Mississippi Rivers. And the picture that's up in front of you right now is a salvage yard called MAW Salvage, and that's actually the way the car is supposed to be posted up there, 20 feet above on that pillar. It is two and a half miles from the Illinois River. During firefighter Walters' deployment, the levee broke at the Illinois River, and they stated it sounded like days of thunder, not the movie, days of actual thunder moving around, that they could hear as the water was going through. This picture was taken two days before the levee broke. This picture was taken two days after the levee broke.
That's the car?
That's the same car in the original picture. So as you can see, this was a disaster of nothing that this community has seen before. Both firefighter paramedics Wigan and Walters assisted the residents of that community, became very close to them. There was only 5,000 people in this whole community. They actually had a cardiac arrest during the time that they were deployed there. Unfortunately, they were not able to save the resident, but members of both the Mavis team and the Swiftwater teams attended that resident's funeral, because they felt like they were part of that community as well. So at this time, I'm gonna present both of you with your certificates. And once again, we could not do this without our significant others at home, and just imagine getting a phone call and basically asking if you could go away for three to 10 days, not determined, don't know how long you're gonna be until you get back, and you have four hours to leave. So I want to also bring up Melissa and Rebecca. As I always would like to thank the Board and the residents of Womet for supporting our department. Without your guys' support, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You know, just briefly, whenever I think of our public safety professionals, whether they be in the fire department or the police department, that's exactly the word I think of professionals. You guys are certified, both departments are certified. We're one of the very few communities around that have both, and we're lucky to have your commitment and service to the village, so thank you all. Trustee Kersman, who is the Chair of Public Safety, is not here tonight, and he asked that I also, you know, congratulate the accomplishments and thank you for your service. He was sorry that he couldn't be here tonight in person to do that, but, so thank you, Deputy Chief Brill, as well as firefighter paramedic Walters and Wigan. You guys are the examples of what we want all of our public servants to be like, and so thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to Item 4.3, which is presentation by Cook County Forest Preserve District Deputy General Superintendent Eileen Feigl. Feigl? Feigl. Okay, sorry.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. I'm Eileen Feigl. I'm the Deputy Superintendent for the Forest Preserves, and we really just want to tell you a little bit about the work we're doing and some of the programs and the sites that are within an easy distance of Womet. I'm joined by Shelley Spencer. Shelley is a member of our Conservation Policy Advisory Council and volunteers her time. Before that, she had another role as a producer of a documentary on the Forest Preserves, which actually won an Emmy, and we're gonna show a very short clip of it, and I'm gonna ask Shelley to kick it off by telling you a little bit about that.
Well, we spent a year going through the Forest Preserves. We were there in every season, and like many of you, I'm sure, who've walked through the preserves or biked through the preserves or had a picnic there, I thought I knew something about the preserves. And going through this, I realized I didn't know anything about the preserves. The preserves are one of the best-kept secrets in Cook County, and one of the reasons that we're here is we just want to make sure that the citizens of Womet understand that there's this amazing resource that has programs and conservation and restoration and volunteer services and a 10,000-year-old canyon?
Million.
Million-year-old canyon. We have eagles that many people haven't seen, and it's just an amazing, amazing resource. And so we brought a short highlight clip from the documentary, which as Eileen said, won an Emmy, which is easy to do when you have strong content and beautiful shots to shoot. I hope you enjoy it.
People in the city don't really know about the Forest Preserves. They're kind of a wonderful green emerald ring around the city. The Forest Preserves are owned by the taxpayers, and it's about 69,000 acres, 11% of our land. It's a wonderful, wonderful asset. You're out here, you can hear the wind in the trees, you can hear the birds, so it's very, very peaceful.
This is one of the oldest forest preserve districts in the United States, and the largest forest preserve district in the United States. Drive in and set up a picnic, unload your bike, go for a swim at one of our aquatic centers, or take, bring out your fishing pole. All of these things are accessible to everybody for free 365 days a year. Beyond just active recreation is the conservation side of the preserve and the aspect of land management. We're the last bastion in many cases for certain plants and animals that really are only found here in the Forest Preserves of Cook County.
Zoonotic disease represents the fastest-growing infectious disease in the world today, and about 75% of the new diseases are zoonotic, those that are transmitted from animals to humans.
Seed farming is just taking the seeds of a flower, and then you pack it all into some soil and some flour, and you take it home, and you can throw it out into a baking lot, or a garden, your front yard, and just give it time to grow, and it blooms into one of these flowers here.
I see myself working with the Forest Preserves. It's just so great to see children excited about being outdoors, and so that they can learn from a young age, because the future of our earth is with the children.
To have this kind of open space so close to a major metropolis is really unheard of. The more people are connected and have an appreciation for it, the more people will want to protect it and even enhance it and even grow it. A lot of people have lost some of their roots of being outdoors. This is something that's a treasure, that we need to protect in the long term, and that is of value to them.
We've left some DVDs of the program on the table if anyone wants them. It's also streaming, and we've left some sheets, so if anybody wants to check it out online, it's available.
Okay. So probably everybody here knows, Cook County is the second-most populated county in the United States, but what a lot of people don't realize is we also have some of the most amazing ecological diversity, and most of that is in the Forest Preserves. So our mission is to really protect and restore those native lands and protect that That includes all types of different native landscaping, from the woodlands to the wetlands to the savannas to the prairies, and that's part of why we have this really amazing biodiversity here, just because all these different climate ecosystems come together, and we do have all types of different landscapes. So those lands, they're really important for all kinds of things. They protect native plants, and they protect our native animals as well. That's the first part of our mission, that protection of the native plants and animals. The second part of our mission is to really make sure everybody in the county feels welcome there, and that they can come to the Forest Preserves to really connect to nature. And we have all kinds of ways to do that. We have 300 miles of paved trails, we have three aquatic centers, we have 10 lagoons and lakes and rivers where you can boat, we have five campgrounds. I don't know if any of you have been to them, but there's camping in Cook County again. You don't have to go to Wisconsin or Michigan. And we have hundreds of picnic rows. And as John McKay, our Resource Management Director, said in that video, they're open 365 days a year, and almost everything that we offer is free. So all of that's possible because literally 100 years ago, there was a team of just concerned civic leaders who wanted to protect the nature that was left, and they realized it was disappearing rapidly. So just very quickly, this is what Cook County looked like in the 1800s. You know, almost no development. The red's the development, the green is natural areas. By the early 1900s, the Industrial Revolution had started, Chicago was the fastest-growing city in the United States, it was one of the fastest-growing cities in the world at that time. And people realized if those spaces weren't protected, they would disappear forever. And they were right, because by 1938, all of Chicago had been developed, and the development starts spilling out into the inner ring of the suburbs. By 1985, it, you know, now this is post-World War II, suburban development is going faster and faster, and much of the county is developed, and you get to current times when virtually all of Cook County is now developed. And those green spaces that you see, almost all of that is Forest Preserves. So had it not been for those leaders 100 years ago saying, "We need to protect what's left," it would all be gone. So just, I always like to show them side by side, because I think that's so sobering, that it took that action, and it was a partnership between civic leaderships and elected officials that said, "Yes, we want to protect this, and we want to keep it natural forever." So that was our past 100 years. We just celebrated our 100-year anniversary, and as part of that, a new civic commission was convened, and their job was to think about, "What do we need to do over the next 100 years?" And the plan that they came up with was called the Next Century Conservation Plan. And it really sets out four big goals, and this is what we focus on now. So the goals are really to nature, people, economy, and leadership. The nature goal is to protect and restore the native lands. Our goal is to restore 30,000 acres to ecological health. We're at about 11,000 so far. The people goal, as I mentioned earlier, is to make sure everybody feels welcome, and they come out to the Forest Preserves and they can connect to nature. The economy goal is really to make sure people understand and value the preserves, both in terms of what it means for our local economies, but also for our quality of life. And then the leadership goal is all-around good governance, and one of the things we've very much committed to is making sure we are good stewards of the resources that we get. So we're being very thoughtful about every dollar that we get, that it's invested so that it's both efficient, and then we're trying to be extremely transparent and accountable about it. We do this with a whole bunch of partners. We work with government agencies, non-governments, nonprofits, foundations, coalitions, et cetera. Two of our key partners are the Brookfield Zoo and the Chicago Botanic Garden, just up the street. I don't know if everybody realizes, both of those are on Forest Preserve land. Both of those receive annual subsidies from the Forest Preserves to help with their operations. They have a different but complementary mission, so while we focus on the health and protection of native plants and species, the garden and the zoo together focus on the global health of animals and plants. For a long time, we thought that if we just protected this land and didn't allow it to be developed, it was fine. There was a saying that nature takes care of itself. Turns out, that was actually quite wrong. Nature does not take care of itself when it's in the middle of an urban-developed county like Cook County. And so over time, even though this land was protected from development, it started to degrade through pollution, through invasive species, and we started losing a lot of the ecosystems that the native plants and animals depend on. ecosystems that the native plants and animals depend on. So restoration, we realized we actually have to take an active hand and restore it and that's a big part of our work today. It's a team effort. It involves staff, contractors. We have Conservation Corps, young adults and some adults who are re-entering the workforce. And then we have thousands of volunteers who work to restore the land. And I always like to show this too because when I started at the forest preserves, I'm not, I don't have an environmental background. It was very hard for me to understand what our ecologists were saying about before and after restoration and that picture shows it. Before restoration, things are choked out with the native, with invasive species that grow literally like weeds and they choke out the native flowers and the native plants. So when you take those out and the sun can hit the ground, the seeds of those native plants are still there underground and they, they come back even after decades. And it's not just about restoring the beauty of the land. Once you restore the native plants, then the native animals come back and that's what we're seeing. So there are bald eagles nesting in the forest preserves again. There's river otters that had disappeared for 100 years. They're back because the river and the ecosystems in the forest preserve are healthy enough for them. We also know that spending time in nature is good for your health. If you take a walk around your neighborhood for 30 minutes, they can measure the biological value to you. If you take that same walk for 30 minutes in a natural area like a forest preserve, it's a heightened benefit. You actually get a better health benefit from walking in nature. They're not sure why, but that study's been replicated around the world. So just quickly, by the numbers, with our partner, the zoo and the garden, the forest preserves are responsible for about 3,000 jobs, 143 million in earnings, 400 million plus in sales, and 200-plus million from activities on the lands and the facilities. So one of those is flood prevention and I wish we could, you know, prevent all the flooding in the county. We can't, but it's really important. Without the forest preserves, there would be a lot more basements looking like that. And there's a way to actually value those services, which are called ecosystem services, like clean water, clean air, flood prevention. The value, the estimated value per year to our county is almost $470 million. So all of this, we get at such a bargain. How many of you have bought one or two cups of coffee in the last 30 days? I have? Okay. That cost of those two cups of coffee is what it costs the average homeowner to support 70,000 acres of nature. So two cups of coffee a month equals $70,000, 70,000 acres of nature. It's really a good deal. We know from studies that environmental groups have done that we are doing more with less money per capita and less money per acre than most of our peers in the region and most of our peers across the country. So I'll close with our vision. As I said, it's about making sure that our natural areas thrive and they are healthy and that people value them and that they come to the forest preserves to connect to nature. And there's different ways to do that. Really, the most important is to participate and come out and visit and enjoy the nature yourself. So you can come take a picnic, you can take a hike, you can go to one of our nature centers, you can go to the Chicago Botanic Garden, you can go to the Skokie Lagoons and Paddle. All of these things are available. That's actually our strongest way to raise awareness and support is having people actually come. So the second part is, and that's really what I'm here tonight to ask you, is please, please help spread the word to your residents, to your friends, to your family, that these preserves belong to all of us. They're such an asset to our quality of life. And better yet, invite your friends and your family to go with you on the picnic or the paddle at Skokie Lagoons and get them to connect to nature. And then we, we always welcome support either through volunteering time at a nature center. You can volunteer in a restoration workday. You can make a donation to our foundation or the other nonprofits that work to support nature. And I am happy to answer any questions, but mostly I just want to say thank you very much for having us here to talk about the forest preserves.
Any questions from any of the trustees?
I did, oh, sorry. I did want to tell you I left brochures also on the back table and I have maps. I didn't want to overwhelm people with stuff, but we have lots of stuff.
Great. All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent Deagle.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is item 44, which is presentation by the Historic Preservation Commission. Chair Hutchinson is here. Welcome.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate you letting me come up here to tell you about the wonderful residents we have here in Willmet. Last month, May 30th, the Willmet Historic Preservation Commission handed out its annual awards to homeowners and contractors. The awards would not be possible without first and foremost, the work of Kate McManus, who is the village planner and liaison to the commission, nor would it be possible without the dedicated volunteers who serve as the commissioners of the preservation. So thank you all very much for giving us such wonderful people to volunteer their time to do this. Of course, we have to thank the judges who actually gave the awards. And that'd be Connie Casey, Gwen Summerjant, and Erica Block. They gave their time, their talent to help select the winners. The commission handed out seven awards in five categories plus one special recognition award. The award categories are stewardship, restoration, rehabilitation, landscape conservation, and sympathetic condition. Now, if I can figure out how to use this.
There you go.
Okay. Our first award was for stewardship. This went to Ross and Nancy Green. They own the home located at 116 Sixth Street and Mr. and Mrs. Green have lived in that home for over 20 years. It was built in 1909 by Walter Burley Griffin, who's a noted architect in the prairie school style of home. You can definitely see a lot of Frank Lloyd Wright in that house. And in the 50s, the homeowners who were living there at the time added some additions that were not really in the prairie style. Now, those who were removed in 2002 and the Greens did add some living space, but they were able to do so thoughtfully, which, in the prairie style, which helped to maintain the character of the home up to this day. And for that reason, we presented them with a stewardship award of helping to maintain such a lovely home. The second award the commission gave out was also for stewardship and... This was awarded to Richard and Elizabeth Gantz for the way they had maintained their home at 16 Canterbury Court. Now, this home was designed in 1929 by noted Chicago architect Edwin Hill Clark, who also designed other things you may have heard of, such as Plaza de Lago, the Brookfield Zoo, and the Lincoln Park Zoo. Mr. and Mrs. Gantz have lived in that home for five years and they have done significant, and if you walked inside, you wouldn't believe, significant interior remodeling in order to really upgrade the house up to the 21st century. And they were able to do it while leaving the exterior completely original, as it should be. Normally, you would not have expected to see that, but they were able to do it. And for that reason, we also provided, gave them the stewardship award for their work at 16 Canterbury Court. Now, the next was, the next award is for preservation. And this was awarded to the homeowners of Tom and Louise Hayden, as well as Marion Restoration and Meyer Guild. Mr. and Mrs. Hayden had the unfortunate event, as we've had, I've had recently as well, of a tree falling onto their house and it fell into their front porch and their dormer. Now, the reason why the after picture looks so much like the before picture is because they, they actually went out there and they meticulously sourced brick to specifically match the brick of their home. It was not an easy task. And they had to use old photographs to get the detail correct and get the, get the right proportions for the detail for the dormer and the porch. And they did a fantastic job of restoring after that damage and it looks, it looks like it never happened at all. And for that reason, we gave them an award for the restoration they did at 115 Chestnut Avenue. Now, Victor and Rebecca Garsis, as well as Cook Architectural Design Studio, were acknowledged with a rehabilitation award. Mr. and Mrs. Garsis own the home at 814 Park Avenue. And in order to bring this home back to its original character, the first thing they did when they bought it was they removed the aluminum siding that was on the home. It didn't belong there, it wasn't there originally. They removed the aluminum clad siding and then using historical photographs that they were able to find, they recreated the style of the hip roof. You can't really tell, but that front porch, they had put a flat roof on it, removed the hip roof and put a flat roof. And they restored that with a hip roof, which is a very difficult kind of roof to put on, but it's really what should be there. They also opened up the corners, you'll notice, on the porch, which makes it a lot more inviting and more historically correct as to how that should look. And they also added cement clapboard siding to the, to the, in various colors, which would be more historical for the time. And they had some various, some color variations in the shingles as well. They used photographs of the home, like I said, of historic, to match the proportions and the trim detail, the original porch and the, and, and the corners and, yeah, the clapboard siding, as well as the colored shingles. So for that reason, we provided, we awarded them with the rehabilitation award for the work they did there. That was no easy task. All right. Our next award was for landscape conservation. Now, this was a great one. This award went to Brian and Laura Geiger and Ricky Construction for their thoughtful conservation of a mature landscaping at 516 Linden. Now, when they purchased this home, the garage was in such disrepair, they had to do a lot of extensive work on it or just tear it down and rebuild it. And they chose to just tear it down and rebuild it. The problem was that there were two mature oak trees, white oak trees, which had grown, one grown literally to touch the garage that was there. So how did they put up a new garage without tearing down these mature trees? Well, they come up with a seven-sided design for the garage and that allowed them to pour the new pad, which mitigated the impact on the root system of the tree. And they also incorporated a clever angled elevation, which accommodates the oak tree while giving ample room for it to continue to grow without hitting the garage again. And if you notice on the right picture, on the very right side, you'll see some brick there next to the garage. They decided instead, that's a, that's a parking lot there as well, a parking spot. Instead of paving that over, they used the bricks, which would help to mitigate the damage to any root system of the two trees. So for that, we gave them landscape conservation for saving those trees while still putting in a garage that they needed. The commission presented the sympathetic condition award to Tad and Laura Eckert and their architect Chad Boomgarten for the rear addition at 731 Elwood Avenue. This home was built in 1910 and is contributing structure to the Willmet North Historic District. An addition was added to the rear of the home for additional living space. And they were able to maintain the first floor roof line. If you can kind of tell, it's that, on the left side, it's like the porch and they closed it in on the right picture to make it more of a living space in there. It's two different views of the home, but that's, that's what they've done with it. They were able to maintain the original first floor roof line. Window sizes were repeated on the addition so as to make it look original. And the addition, the brick used to, on the, on the covered porch, the rear entrance matched the front entrance of the home. So again, they went out and specifically found brick that would match, looked like it's not brand new, but matched with the whole home to make it look uniform. And they got the sympathetic condition award for that one. Another sympathetic condition award was presented to Colin and Liz Gillespie and their architect Chad Boomgarten again for the work that they did on their home at 201 15th Street. This home was built in 1910. The addition was added to accommodate a new kitchen, a sunroom, a mudroom, and up on the second floor was a master suite. They were able to match the pitch of the existing roof, create the deep overhangs that already existed, include a cross-gabled dormer. And we found that this was an excellent example, an excellent example of sensitivity when expanding and adapting a historic bungalow to meet the needs of today's family. And finally, we were happy to honor the developer, Max Krasinski of MJK Homes and preservation architects John Eifler and Chris Ink and preservation architect and professor at the Art Institute of Chicago, Charles Piple, for their efforts in helping us save the Strand Steel House. This house was previously located at 2105 Chestnut. Now, Max had purchased what he thought was a vacant land. It was two PIN numbers. He said, "I can put two houses on this. This'll be great." And he got there and there was a house already there. So turns out that this house wasn't just a house. It was a prototype from the 1933 Chicago World's Fair. It was sitting on that property, the Strand Steel House. It's French art deco and it's made of pre-constructed panels for easily assembly and it created a showcase home designed utilizing materials and technology that had been used in architects, in residential architecture before. And it was part of the Homes of Tomorrow exhibit at the World's Fair. Now, with nothing to gain and plenty of money potentially to lose, Max worked diligently to find an alternative to demolishing that house. This was a year-long delay on him to develop that property. But with the help of Landmarks Illinois, with the Village of Willmet, and with the Willmet Historical Society, we were able to purchase a shipping container and we had volunteers from the Art Institute of Chicago and other architects trying to figure out how to best disassemble this house and put it in a shipping container, which we then were able to send to the St. Philippi estate in Barrington, their foundation there for free public use. So it's been saved, it's still in Illinois, and it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful fact that we were able to, to do that. And Max and everybody got a special award for helping to do that because it's not something they had to do and it was, it was wonderful that they did. Now, all the awards that we handed out were basically done through volunteerism. The commission, the judges, the homeowners, all do their part in doing what's right to make Willmet what it is, as far as, as architecture goes. And it says a lot about the people and the residents who live here, that they're willing to take that time and just do it without legislation, just do it because they love the neighborhood, they love the way it looks and they, they like the way it is. And we, we gave those awards this year. It's our second year in a row that we've done it and it's, it's been, it's been a real honor to do it and celebrate the people of Willmet. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
My question. Has the Strand Steel House been reassembled?
It has not been reassembled yet. No, to my knowledge, it has not been. But the St. Philippi estate, as I understand it, will be doing it and it'll be, be open for, for use there, for free public use.
Thank you.
A former chair of the Historic Preservation Commission herself.
So I, I really appreciate that you brought this presentation so more people can share in, in the houses and hopefully it'll, it'll get more excitement and more interest for the years to come. But I think this is the first time that I remember that on the board that we could actually see the houses and learn a little bit about their history. So I think, I think it's a great idea. So hopefully you can do it again next year.
Hope so.
Yeah. And I think, you know, while, while the commission has its sort of day-to-day responsibilities around, you know, approvals on locally landmarked properties, I think this is a really important part of your role, which is celebrating the, the people who have gone out of their way, probably at higher cost, to preserve their homes. You know, our, our, our local architecture is, is part of what makes our community beautiful and a great place and it really is wonderful to celebrate that. You know, we can't, we can't micromanage every person's addition, but when someone does it right, we should recognize that and celebrate it. And that's what the commission does through these awards and I think it's great.
Absolutely. We love doing it too. It's, it's so much fun to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item under Report of Officers is item 45, which is request for an executive session to discuss the acquisition of property pursuant to Section 2 Sub C Sub 5 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. We'll move on to our report from our village manager, Mr. Frenzer.
Your report, Mr. President.
Next report is our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
Your report, Mr. Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is item 5, which is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight. We'll move on to our Standing Committee reports. First up is the Land Use Committee Trustee Barrow.
All items on the consent agenda.
Next up is Finance Committee Trustee Kennedy.
We had meetings earlier this week with Melinda Malloy and Mr. Raymond too. And I want to thank both of them and Santa Plunkett and Tom Sullivan for their input. Melinda will present the audit report and the manager's notes and go ahead.
Great. Thanks. So again, good evening. Just so everyone knows, Louderback and Amen, who is the village's auditor, has completed their review of the 2018 financial Just so everyone knows, I, Lauterbach and Amon, who is the village's auditor, has completed their review of the twenty-eighteen financial statements. And I'm pleased to report that we have once again received a clean audit opinion. Because of strong revenue performance and prudent expenditure management, the general fund balance grew by two-point-four million to eighteen-point-six million at year end. Our water and sewer funds also saw increases in their total fund balance positions. This is the fourth year of implementing the requirements of GASB number sixty-eight, which is related to the reporting of the village's pension plans and associated liabilities. And we spent quite a bit of time talking about that as we went through our discussions about the amortization periods. But it has had a significant impact on the village's stated net position results. So, that liability was over seventy-three million this year. New this year was the implementation of GASB seventy-five, which is related to the reporting of the village's other post-employment benefit, known as OPEB, and its associated liability. It too has a significant impact on our net position and that liability was over four million dollars. So, as trustee Kennedy has already mentioned, there was a finance committee meeting. It was held on June twenty-first. And the members were able to review and discuss the CAFRA results and the related material in detail with both myself and the auditors. And right now, I would like to introduce Brad Porter, who is with the firm Lauterbach and Amon. He was the senior auditor on our review. And he's going to discuss in general the results and kind of give you some highlights and answer any questions you might have.
Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brad Porter. I am here on behalf of Lauterbach and Amon as the audit manager on the village's audit to present to you the fiscal year twenty-eighteen required communication. Before I begin my presentation, I'd like to thank all of you for allowing me to be here today. And I'd also like to give a very special thank you to Melinda and her team. They did a tremendous job this year. This year above other years, there was quite a burden placed on them with some of the recent accounting pronouncements that were in, in place this year. So, we are very appreciative of all of their hard work and effort. They did such a great job this year. Now, there are three pieces of required communication that I'd like to briefly go over tonight, two of which you should have in front of you, which, the audit report being number one, management letter being number two. And there's actually a third piece of required communication, which you will not find in front of you, and that can be obtained from Melinda electronically. That is the SAS one-fourteen letter. Statement on auditing standard, statement on auditing standard number one-fourteen requires us to communicate whether or not we had any disagreements or difficulties that we had encountered over the course of our audit procedures. I'm very happy to report today that there were no such disagreements and difficulties. So, that can be found in the body of that letter. I'd like to jump right into the audit report. So, if you wouldn't mind, please turning to page ten.
Of the big book.
Of the big book, you got it. It's hard to miss. Here you will find the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This was issued by the GFPA for the fiscal year ended December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen. We will be working hand-in-hand with Melinda and her team in applying for that same award for the fiscal year under audit, twelve-thirty-one, twenty-eighteen as well. Moving forward a couple of pages, you will find the Lauterbach and Amon letterhead on pages eleven and twelve. This is our independent auditor's report to the board. In addition to stating not only your responsibility as the village's management, which is the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements, it states our opinion on the, on those financial statements that were presented to us. On the top of page twelve, you will find this opinions paragraph. As Melinda had mentioned previously, we have issued an unmodified clean opinion for the fiscal year under audit. This is the highest level of opinion that you can receive in the governmental accounting world. So, again, kudos to all that were involved in the audit process. An unmodified opinion states that we believe the financial statements to be free from material misstatement and that there are sound internal controls surrounding the financial reporting function. A couple pages further, you will find on page fourteen, the management discussion and analysis. And that is exactly what this section of the audit is. It is completed by management and it represents an executive summary of the fiscal year's activity. So, we, we understand some of the financial statements that lie behind this section are very complex and not the easiest to interpret and understand. So, I highly encourage you as a board to read through this management discussion and analysis. It provides a lot of great financial highlights, a profile of the village, things of that nature that you can find useful prior to jumping into the audit report itself. Now, on pages thirty and thirty-one, you will find your statement of net position. This is your government-wide balance sheet. And there's one number that I'd like to point out on here, that is your total net position on the bottom of page thirty-one. This total net position figure of the village was thirty-six million, five-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars, which is up six percent over the prior year. So, typically, net position is the best measure of financial performance for a given fiscal year. So, anytime we see that number increasing, it certainly shows financial strength of the village. On pages forty-six through seventy-nine, you will find our notes to the financial statements. Now, again, we may be here longer than the allotted time slot tonight if I read through each of these notes, but I would like to point out a couple of areas for reference. Pages sixty-seven and sixty-eight have information regarding your capital assets, both at the governmental level and the business-type level. Pages sixty-nine through seventy-six represent your long-term debt of the village. So, there are a number of schedules pertaining to outstanding obligations and liabilities. And then, note four, which begins on page seventy-nine, will have a lot of that information regarding GASB sixty-seven and sixty-eight's reporting for IMRF, as well as your GASB seventy-four, seventy-five reporting for your other post-employment or your retiree health benefits. Now, jumping all the way to the back of the report to page one-hundred-and-eighty, I would like to point out that there, this is where you will find your statistical section, which includes a number of schedules pertaining to financial trends and demographics of the village that you, you as a board can certainly find useful. It provides, again, a lot of ten-year trends in terms of revenue capacity, debt capacity, things along those lines.
But to that point, in the, the, the net position on one-eighty is very influenced by changes in accounting policies.
Absolutely. So, as you will see, your unrestricted net position took quite a big hit in the last couple of years just due to the implementation of GASB sixty-seven, sixty-eight, as well as GASB seventy-four, seventy-five. GASB had determined that the previous, what was in place prior to those policies being implemented was not sufficient in terms of measuring, measuring some of the implicit liabilities and things of that nature that comes about with GASB seventy-four, seventy-five. I'd like to jump over with, to the management letter. Now, our management letter, the primary purpose of this document is to convey any internal control recommendations, upcoming GASB pronouncements, and in general, just governmental best practices that we see in the industry. So, if there's something that we identify as a weakness, we typically bring it up in the form of a management letter. This management letter is broken up into current recommendations, which is anything that came about from the fiscal year twenty-eighteen audit procedures, and then prior recommendations, which are comments that were previously reported in our management letter in the past, and we provide a status update on these comments. So, you will see that there's one current recommendation this year, which is essentially a housekeeping comment. We have to disclose, anytime a fund's net position falls below zero, we are required to disclose it, even without regard to materiality. As you can see, it was, the employee health fund was, had deficit net position of four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars this year, which was simply due to a timing issue. As you could see, management responses are provided with each of these comments. So, Melinda and her team had provided explanations for why these comments exist and are in this management letter. So, with the two prior recommendations, I'm happy to report, obviously, GASB seventy-four, seventy-five was implemented this year in the form of the actuarial evaluation that was conducted by Foster and Foster. So, this comment essentially, as you can see in the status paragraph, it's been implemented this year and it will be entirely removed in next year's management letter. The second prior recommendation is, again, another one of those housekeeping comments. It's for any fund that exceeds their budget. And that was, in twelve, in the prior year, we had the workers' compensation fund slightly over budget at thirty-one hundred dollars. This year, we had the municipal garage and the section one-oh-five sick leave exceed their budget amounts. So, again, we are required to disclose that anytime with the net position and the funds over budget. So, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to field any, field any questions that you might have.
So, I, I will ask the questions that I ask the auditors every year.
No problem.
First one is just, you know, would you confirm that you had the full cooperation of the village staff throughout the process and that you had full access to any books or records that you requested?
Absolutely, on day one.
Second question is, while I understand that an audit is not a review of internal controls, that is part of the audit, sort of doing an assessment of them and that guide you're on. In, in your review of the internal controls, was there anything, any concerns at all that merit the village board's attention regarding internal controls that are in place in the village?
None whatsoever. And had there have been an instance that we have identified, it would have been shown in this management letter. So, we, although we do not express an opinion on the internal control environment, part of our process is to perform limited procedures so that we feel comfortable and can assess risk at a low level for, for the village. And we did just that.
And then, just, again, your, your, the scope of your audit isn't a review that the policies and procedures that are in place are being followed, but you do test that in some cases and the like. And was there any instance where you found that the village's policies and procedures were not being followed?
Absolutely not.
Okay. I'll open the floor if there's any other questions for auditors. Sorry, that's the finance guy in me asked to ask those questions. Any questions for Ms. Malloy or Mr. Porter? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, I think that's it for finance. We'll move on to administration committee, trustee Dodd.
All items on consent.
And municipal services committee. Let's see. We had two items on consent. And the public safety committee, we had no report. Judiciary committee, trustee Plunkett.
All items on consent.
There are no reports from our special committees. There's, item seven is new business. There's no additional new business to discuss. So, we'll move on to adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the acquisition of property pursuant to section two sub C sub five of the Illinois Open Meeting Act.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. The motion carries. We stand adjourned to executive session.